All right, it's 1300 hours, I'll call this meeting. We have an approval of the agenda.
I need to make a motion to add to the new business after number five. We need to look into the sponsorship of the 150th magazine that Graham Star has put now. If we want to be a part of that. We gotta do it pretty quick.
We have a second?
I'll say.
Everything else good with you, Jim?
Motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Say.
Unanimous.
Well, we have an approval of the minutes for the September 7th, 2022, back in the board.
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
If you have time to look over the September 7th, 2022, close session.
Motion to approve.
Say.
Unanimous.
This town, I'll open up the floor to public comment. We have anybody here for public comment?
I think everybody's on the agenda.
We have a motion to close for public comment.
Motion both of them.
Unanimous.
First up on old business is Mr. Spore with the Goo with the rest of the board about some improvements to water.
Yeah, see, we've been talking about this so long, I've moved up to the top. We're still plugging away.
Thank you, sir.
That's impressive, too. Okay. Thanks for inviting me to report on the water project. Seems like this water project's been back and forth a number of times. And the reason it has been is because the funding aspects of it are somewhat complicated. There's a lot of federal money out there. More recently, since the town wasn't successful in getting some of the state money, the Appalachian Regional Commission, which originally had awarded a $300,000 grant to the town for the Tallulah Water Treatment Plan upgrade, came into some additional federal money and got word that they are going to fund 100% some of the projects across the Appalachian region in all the states that's in Appalachia and the counties that were considered distressed back two, three years ago when this original application was submitted. So in North Carolina, Graham County was distressed at the time, it's not distressed any longer. But since it was distressed at the time, the word is that the project, or the application at least, that the town originally submitted, they would fund 100%. The hiccup with funding Tallulah now is that since so much time has gone by, two, three years, with inflation and all the material prices, everybody's aware of how prices have gone up, that project's a lot more expensive, it's like a $3 million project all by itself. Originally, it was a $2.2 million project when we applied for it. So the word from A R C is that they will fund a water project at the town's discretion up to $2.2 million. So the challenge for us, y'all as a town, is to determine what exactly you want to do. And since we can't completely fund Tallulah, we need to fund something that will help the town. And I think in talking to some of the board members, and Lamar, and Chad, and others, focusing in on replacing the water meters, number one, going to automatic meter readings that you can try to find your water loss problems and identify those is top priority. And secondarily, potentially going to find some property to drill at least a couple additional wells to supplement what you already have.
Absolutely.
And that by itself will probably spend all the money. When I came in today, Chad gave me a quote for some actuators at the Long Creek plant. I think we could probably fund those in there as well. So I think overall, this handout that I just gave you kind of provides you an idea of that potential scope of work. I point you to those first two items, the new A M R meters, which will help out a lot. But I also think that we ought to consider replacing some of the meter boxes, all the setters and stuff. There's probably a lot of water meters that are antiquated and that they need to be replaced. So I put down 500 new water service assemblies in that scope of work. I don't know how many we'd really need to replace, but I think 500, that's about half of them would probably be a good idea. We've got the two new wells, we'll drill test wells on property to be identified. If we get enough well yield, we're looking at 100 gallons a minute per well would be optimal, then we'll go ahead and actually develop the wells into a water supply. We may or may not need a water, a well treatment building, we got one out at the current property now we could use. If it turns out to be a different site, we would need a building. And we need some water lines to connect all that. The big loose end is to identify what property the town would like to purchase. And a lot of that depends on what's available. I know there's been some ideas about which property we might look at. So we don't really know where that is currently. I'm going to spend the rest of the day looking at some property today to see what might make sense. A R C will pay for the property, but the town is going to have to do an appraisal for the property because they will only add fair market value. One of the decisions that the board needs to make is who and how to get this appraisal done once we do identify the property.
Okay.
So schedule wise, A R C is looking to receive an application by next week. So a lot of these decisions need to be made. We don't have to actually identify the property particularly for the application, but we kind of need to understand what the value might be. So we'll work with you all to kind of determine all that. So that's by way of an update for the project. And I'd be open to any questions the board or any of the staff might have about that.
Appreciate you.
Do you guys have an appraiser that you recommend to us or that could be used quickly? Because I'm sure that they all, I know the appraiser here.
They're all pretty busy. And any of them that I know, being from Asheville and everything, are probably going to be more in that direction. Probably would be better to have an appraiser out this way that would be more familiar with the lay of the land.
Yeah.
But we can help you figure out who might.
I know one guy I can reach out to.
Okay.
And we do need to do something next week?
We need to have something done pretty quickly, yes.
Okay.
And we're in the process of putting all the background information together for the application because A R C, they fund projects that has economic development potential. And I know the town's been struggling for a while with jobs and that kind of thing. And so you're in a good position to justify that grant. So we have to put all the details together for that.
So what we need is an appraisal of proposed properties?
Yeah.
Appraisal, an official appraisal.
And maybe a couple of properties, I mean, it's depending on how this all falls out and what makes the most sense. It doesn't have to be property near where the existing well site is. It could be another location. Obviously, it needs to be pretty close to the town's water system so we can connect into it.
Right. I'll start working on appraisers immediately.
So what I'm looking for today is just kind of an official endorsement that this is finally the project that we need to push forward with. I think I've been personally back and forth on what the town ought to do. I hate that we can't afford to bring Tallulah back online. But perhaps in the future, if economic development does pick up here and you need more water, maybe we can get some sort of assistance from the state. I know y'all have been talking to Senator Corbin and others in the state legislature about that. Perhaps that could come, be funded that way as well. But I think in the meantime, the project that we have will actually help the town build up the water supply, make sure that you've got enough water in case another drought comes. And having two more wells will make the system probably that much more efficient and economical to operate.
It's very efficient.
I'm definitely on board with it.
Lamar's, he's the brains of the system. I want him to be on board with this, too. He's had some opinions about it as well.
So you just need something to go with them, okay, to go ahead with what you've got?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we support this project?
That'd be good.
Yes.
All right.
Good, thanks.
Thank you for all your input.
I got one more question. On the waterside, the property purchase, I know it's one way Miami to drill wells and stuff on. To what extent can we use that property like maybe bike trails or bike trails and something like draw more?
It's not officially eligible through A R C, but if the only way you can buy the property is to buy a little bit more, and that's the best site, then they would support that as long as the appraisal came in, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of correct. Of course, probably the most feasible place property.
Could be, yeah, that's right.
All right, good. I appreciate you doing that.
Sure.
All right. Next on agenda is Mr. Eisenhower.
Sean, what I've got, I've got some pictures and things here, and water tanks, and everything, and pipe works. Over, if you've got any questions on these pictures, I'd like to anything you want to look at or whatever.
All right, appreciate it, sir. Mr. Eisenhower, what would be the grand total?
For all of it?
Yeah.
406.
Okay.
Which tank is this picture from?
Well, you got different ones. This right here is Junalaska, that's Junalaska. This is outside of.
The water plant?
The water plant up at other one. And this is Junalaska. We ain't got none of the inside of the wanted water plant. And that's outside of the water plant up there also.
So this is the one at Long Creek?
That's Long Creek right there. The white one, this is at Long Creek. That's at Long Creek.
This is. When was these taken?
Month ago.
Month ago? Wasn't the Long Creek tank recently painted?
Long Creek, I think we have it on the schedule for, for the exterior was painted and interior is coming up for renovation.
The exterior was painted. So why is the paint peeling off of it?
I don't think I have a picture.
That was done in July, August of 2020? The paint's already peeling?
Well, that's covered under maintenance contract, just so you know, if we do see some peeling. But I do see a few, I can't tell if that's peeling or if it's.
Looks like peeling to me.
Well, if it is, it's covered.
I mean, Sean, if anybody wants to go with us, I'll probably look at it. I mean, we'll take them apart and look at it. I didn't know the tank had just been painted.
Yeah.
You can see it.
There's a few spots, I see.
I see several spots.
But it's not, it's not that many, but it is covered, so we're certainly doing it to fix that. That's the good thing about having a maintenance contract, is everything is covered. It's always under warranty, so if something happens or something breaks or results, it's covered.
So when was this painted, July 2020, August?
I don't know exactly, I don't have the exact dates.
It was done in year one of the contract, so we're about to be entering year four, so it would have been before three years ago.
So if a state person would see that paint chipping, has a state person been up there and inspected it since the paint's been chipping? Would that be an issue that the state would bring to our attention?
Not at all. That's a very small spot on the ladder of your roof of the tank. There's no structural, it's still coated. It's not going down to bear steel, the previous coating is still there. So it's still coated, it's not corroding at all, you're not having any steel loss.
It's a rust to me, right there.
I didn't see it rust.
Looks like rust to me.
That's a different picture. I can't tell exactly what's getting on my nose on it.
Sean, I've got some pictures here, if you need more pictures.
I'd love to see them. This is on the foundation. This is a very, very small spot.
Right here. You see this, you see that? See that spot? See that spot? That spot? You see that? What is that like there?
Failing paint, right?
That's pure rust. That's on the tank that.
Yeah, that looks bad.
Which tank is that?
That's the one that you said you just painted. Right here, right there, right there, peeling off, right there, peeling off, peeling off all over. Peeling off on the sidewalls, peeling off all over the roof, it's peeling everywhere. I'm not going to say you're, that's not me, if you're going to ride it, if you hit the wave with a drive up on one.
I'd be glad to look at it, but every bit of that is covered under the maintenance contract, so anything.
It shouldn't be a peeling off, you painted this thing a year and a half ago. It should, paint shouldn't have been peeling off like that if it was done properly.
I will say, on the kind of deal that Scott's offering, it's a one-time deal.
What kind of warranty are you offering that deal?
I won't warranty any kind of warranty they want. I stand behind my word.
Our offer is a maintenance contract.
Absolutely.
I'm here local, I'm here local, and anytime I need any help, I'll be right here to serve.
Mr. Eisenhower.
We've got an officer right here in Robbins Field. Before we lived here in Robbins Field, we'd be right here in just.
You do your work yourselves, too, you don't subcontract it out?
We don't subcontract, all my guys is Ireland, Coles, and we'll try to keep, we'll try to do this with local folks and things like that right there.
Absolutely. So you've subcontracted yours out, don't you?
We do some, yes, sir.
So a lower bidder is actually doing the work?
No, we use the same guys, we don't bid it out. We use the same guys, we just set them up as our own little company.
But still, you're subcontracting it out?
My guy Scott used to do some of the work.
He did.
But he's going to be doing his own, is that correct, Mr. Eisenhower?
I do my own, that's correct. I've been doing my own since 1992.
His contract, $20,000 cheaper than yours?
Before they do. I have no idea, we may be comparing apples to oranges. I have no idea what he's doing in the future, is he doing inspections since he covering future paint jobs? I have no idea, I haven't seen his proposals.
I've got a nice level inspector sitting right here, and he's went through schooling, all his schooling and everything.
What we can do, we'll take this under consideration. Our attorney isn't here today, she'll be here next month. And we'll address or award or see which contract that we want to go with. But we're going to have to have time to review the materials.
That's fine, that's great.
But like I said, our attorney's not here today, so we will be making any decision today. But I do appreciate you bringing this in.
That's all we have, we just brought it to let you look at it, go over it, I mean, see what tends to shine.
Yeah, that's.
It's our hometown, and we just, we really want to help you guys out.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Whichever way you guys decide.
They got the floor up there. The paint job or the chipping that you're seeing, that's covered in our maintenance contract, we'll come and fix that regardless.
Okay.
We appreciate y'all's business in the past, and we certainly want to keep it in the future. But that's why you have a maintenance contract. One thing I will suggest, make sure you're comparing apples to apples, because I have no idea if, he doesn't have any other maintenance contracts per se, this would be his first one. So if.
He's got. He will be my partner, it will be my first one. But how long have you all been in maintenance business? This American Tank Maintenance, how long you been in business?
10 years.
10 years. Scott Eisenhower Enterprise and Ridge Runner Paintings have been in business since 1992. That's a big difference. I've painted tanks all over the United States, I have.
Painting tanks in a maintenance contract is two totally different ballgames.
I can maintain them and keep them up.
God bless and painting them is my intention.
We'll maintain your tanks for whatever you need done with it, with heckers anyway.
There's a lot more involved in a maintenance contract than just painting. There's inspections, with NACE certified inspections, I'm a NACE inspector, too.
Right here.
But there's also the emergency service and the warranty piece to it as well. I will say, I have no idea if his price includes just one paint job, mine includes the next paint job that's coming up as well. So what you're looking at on that 10-year schedule that I gave y'all, it's covering the next paint job as well. So it's not just this one-time deal. I have no idea what his price includes. So it could be apples and oranges that you're comparing, I have no idea. But I'd be glad to answer any questions or what have you in that aspect.
If you paint the tank right, you won't know what to paint it 10 years later. If you do it right the first time, you don't have to paint it twice, 10 years.
So what are you going to do?
Buy the wrong paint job.
He's painting one time within 10 years.
I've got a question for you. In July 2020, there was a gentleman staying in the San Remo motel, said they were in town painting water tanks and got into an altercation and done some damage to the hotel room, was that some of your people?
I have no idea, I'm not aware of it.
I have the incident report from the sheriff's department.
As the town alderman.
Because you're saying that, you're saying that's not maybe your particular.
I have no idea, I'm not aware of that incident.
As an elected town alderman, we won't, I guess all three of us want to look at these because we've got to make sure that the water is safe for the customers. We've got to make sure that the tanks are properly passed with the state inspection. And that's my main concern, is to make sure that our customers drink water that is safe for them and not going to harm them or their families or our school. So that's where I'm at with this, I want to make sure that we look into these and make sure that it's, you know.
It's like a whole Scott, you know, we'll need time to review.
Yeah, we'll just need to review.
And American Tanks proposal as well.
Maybe that may inform you on that, with your drinking water, safe drinking water. Your drinking water is not too safe when you've got paint chips falling down in the water while they are in Junalaska. That's not good.
Well, we totally agree, but we haven't painted it yet, we haven't been allowed to paint it yet. That's why we're trying to paint it, honestly, that's why you got paint chips on the inside.
Because you don't know if that tank has got lead on it, if that tank has not got lead on it, you don't know. Unless, have you tested Lamar or has anybody?
Yeah, he's tested it, well, the customers' residents are tested every three years. And we just done, and so far we've not had no.
Has the paint, paint itself been tested on the tank?
No, I didn't know about that, yeah.
So you don't know if you've got lead falling into the water or what right now, because none of the chips have been tested on that tank.
Right.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this until our attorney comes, and then we can look at this again next month and try to get this resolved.
Yeah, I'll say it, too.
We definitely need something in place for sure.
Scott, do you have any tanks that you've painted or made, anywhere close by around? We painted San Teakley down here, Lamar, we've done San Teakley down here. We've done Matsonville, Tennessee, we've done.
Dashes, North Carolina.
We got all kinds of.
Sapphire, North Carolina.
All those places.
We got the mayor like San Teakley, Mr. Gross, are you satisfied with those tanks?
Yes, we've been satisfied, because I haven't looked in them recently, because I didn't think I was supposed to. They look good from the outside, Scott Camp maintains them, and he works with Lamar, and I'm pleased with them.
We painted the tanks Lamar.
It hasn't been that long ago, had it?
Two years.
Yeah, because I wasn't on the council then, so Willie wasn't party to the conversations or anything the day after, but it's good.
But we will have an agreement. Well, that'd give us a month to review both agreements, actually.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And then we'll get back to both parties.
All right, I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
Do you have anything else under action next, we kind of combined the two? Do you have anything else?
I mean, the paperwork that we brought was just the layout of the changes of the denim. So, yes, that one. It's just another printout. As you can see, it just showed, push on one of the.
I do have a question for you on that.
Yep.
In each one of these contracts, you have a separate contract for each tank. And you talk about after a certain number of years, you make an adjustment to the annual fees. It's kind of vague, the language of that, you talking about? Look at.
It limits it to a certain inflation.
4%.
Yes.
Like, I'll use the Long Creek tank, for example, the annual fee for contract years one, two, and three shall be $1,550 per year. The annual fee for contract year four shall be adjusted to reflect the current cost of services. The annual fee for contract year four shall be adjusted to reflect the current cost of service. That language is a little vague to me. So you're talking about four percent on top of that, seventeen fifty?
We're talking, it's, it's per year, it's per annual, so, and it's been, it's been three years after that, so it could be- What we've been doing is nine percent. What Alex just handed out to you guys are the exact numbers of what it's gonna be in the future.
You didn't answer my question, sir. Is that gonna be four percent of seventeen fifty?
It's typically three percent. No, it's three percent, it's actually gonna be nine percent. It's maximum of four percent per year, and it's been three years, so, no, it's actually nine percent is what it's going to be. And that's what I figured in that rate, okay, it's the nine percent.
Okay, well, like I said, we'll have our attorney look at them, and then we will look, then we'll make a decision one way or the other, and we'll get my fees.
And what we do is we keep that fee constant for three years, so that it's not a budget nightmare for you guys, so we take it for constant, and we adjust for inflation occasionally.
Yeah, that, but it sounds a little vague to me, the annual fee for contract year four shall be adjusted to reflect the current cost of service. I'm just trying to ascertain what that's gonna be.
What we can do, and what we've done with this addendum, that, I don't know if you've handed out, but what we plan to do with the addendum is lock those numbers in, exactly what they will be. So, there won't be, that vagueness will go away.
It's in the contract, huh? Here's the-
Well, the addendum provides-
The layout, yeah, seven years. Only have two copies.
So there's not gonna be no surprise, four percent annual fees?
We're not into the three with that addendum, so with your new numbers that we ran after we met with you last time, um, kind of alleviate some of your concerns of, you know, budgetary, of town and all that stuff. We, we lowered our numbers down to forty-seven thousand, like we talked about in that meeting, instead of sixty thousand, that was coming up a year.
Okay.
Um, I will caution you, it sound like to me that it doesn't include future renovations. Um, that's a big number in the future. He's just doing one paint job. So, when you're looking at these numbers, my maintenance program, it covers for the future renovations as well. Even if I had to, I know we had some paint flanking, and I apologize for that.
And when you're gonna come and redo that?
And we can certainly, we can do whatever we gotta do, that's covered in our maintenance contract. Those are very minor spots in the overall scheme of the tank, I know it's kind of showing you a snapshot of, it looks big, but it's not really that big.
I'd like that reparking the problem, man, I mean, if it's covered under the contract.
Yes, yes. That's, I mean, that's, that's the key to a maintenance contract. Usually with a one-time paint job, you get one you want to, and that's it. So, you get into your three, and, and you just kind of drop. But with the maintenance contract, it's always covered, it's always under warranty, so you don't have to worry about it. We, we'll do anything we can to get you those business spots, we appreciate that.
Just like I told Mr. Eisenhower, you know, we'll need time to review both.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll make a decision.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, we appreciate y'all.
All right, next on the agenda is, uh, John Colwell.
I've got three things, um, that we want to talk about today. The first is, we have a group coming to town tomorrow. They'll be here tomorrow and Friday, it's the CPNI, which is, stands for the Construction Professionals Network Institute. And this is a group of architects and engineers. It's probably similar to the study that was done back in twenty twelve, the, the, but on a smaller scale. But these are architects, engineers, contractors, construction professionals. They're coming to help us look at undeveloped and underdeveloped properties. So, um, they're a nonprofit, and they've already helped thirty different small towns across the state. And they have graciously agreed to come to our town. I want to point out that these folks, these are folks kind of off from all across the state. They're from Charlotte, Greensboro, or whatever. They're not coming here to tell you what to do in your town, or to make your town look like their town. They're coming here to find out what you want, the people that live here, want. And that's the purpose of these meetings. So it's very important that the aldermen and the mayor come to these meetings. Uh, I know that there's a couple people, Michelle is here, uh, that are probably gonna be at these meetings. They, they will come back with a report reflecting what the people who live here want to do with the development of their town.
So are they gonna poll people that actually live here, or are they-
Yeah, that's the whole idea, that's, uh, that's the whole idea of this, Sean, they're, they're, they're here to find out what the people who live here want to do in the development of the town.
I mean, are they actually gonna go down and talk to people, or are they just gonna basically don't people come to that meeting?
Hell, they can't, they, they're, they've got a piece, and I'm the leaders that were invited, you were invited, weren't you? So you can, you can share.
Yeah, I mean-
You can share your thoughts about what, what they are going to recommend or whatever. So, yeah, they're trying to get all the leaders, the county, uh, county manager is invited, all of the county councilmen are invited. Uh, there's local business interests that are invited, they want to speak with the leaders of the community about, uh, what they want to do in the community. So, is, is that a problem? Do you have a problem with them coming to help?
I mean, really, that should have been something the town decided.
Well, you had them invited.
You did, I came up and talked to you folks about this six months ago.
Yeah.
You, you were in a meeting? Is that, is that-
No, man, it's okay.
Okay. Anyway, they're, they're here to help us with the undeveloped properties. And, what we get out of it will depend on what we put into it. So, obviously it'll be great, some, some, they're gonna do a tour of the town and the immediate area, probably. You know, we, we want to have representatives from the eastern band and from the county and the town to be there and leaders of the town. At any rate, that happens, uh, tomorrow, the public portion of the meeting starts at one-thirty at Robinson United Methodist Church. Um, there will be different sessions from one-thirty through to five P.M. Um, there's a couple people here that are, that are, uh, gonna help with the tour beforehand. The next morning, Friday morning, the meetings again will be at the church from nine until twelve. Yeah, so, and, and anybody that wants this, I'll have, I'll have, I just got the agenda on this, uh, yesterday afternoon, the revised agenda. Just got the initial agenda last Friday afternoon. So, um, at any rate, I can, I can make you copies of these, uh, you can get them from me this afternoon, just contact me. Uh, so that's kind of a neat thing, that, that these folks are coming here and offering their time and, and, and abilities to help with the people who live here, with their vision of what they'd like to see. They're not here to, to force their views on us, they're here to develop our views about what we want the town to do. Uh, that's the first thing that I wanted to talk about. The second thing is the wayfinding signs. We met with Andy Russell earlier, he's put a stop on us finishing the signs, which will only take a day. We've got a sign maker, uh, on standby, he wanted to see a list of destinations, um, on those signs. I met with Taco about that. We've put, he wants to know whatever we might add in the future, and-
Rub your crystal ball.
Projects, yeah, projects that aren't, you know, I want to meet, I want to be sure, like, for instance, if the, that the band with the property that they've bought and their plans to put a, a center out there for the June Oluska Museum, you know, we want to be able to have a sign that points out there, that's within two miles of the town limit. And, uh, so we want to make sure, but we don't know what the names are gonna be of these places. So, I tried to submit a list that, that reflects everything in the future, and, uh, you know, we don't know the name of the museum across the street yet. So, anyway, I gave him the list the best I could, over two months ago, I missed it by one month because we had a death in the family and I had to leave town. I gave him this list at the meeting that we had at the church, and I assumed he was gonna be at last month's meeting, he wasn't here. Sherry's been calling him, uh, we haven't had, heard anything back. He's probably busy with the quarter K project. And, but, we, he has told me not to go and work on the project, or not have any work done on it, until we have an encroachment agreement. So it's really important that we get that agreement, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to encourage. I was told that the only thing that they needed was the destinations for the signs.
I think Ms. Allen was the one that told us to hold off on that, because-
Well, he came back and-
And he did, but then nothing ever did get-
Because we was waiting on the stake to do the encroachment. And that's who we're waiting on, I think, is the stake.
Yeah, it's all in his hands, I think.
But he has the final say.
It's my understanding that you went ahead and had the post say it before even talking to him about it.
No, 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 we always, we always, he was always out and always in the loop. And, we didn't, we were not aware of an encroachment agreement that was needed. And we thought that we had approval. He came out and looked at all of the sites for the signs, and we thought we had approval. We did not know, we did not know that, that there wasn't anything in place. So, you know, we're not trying to hoodoo anybody, we're just, uh, as soon as we became aware of it, we did what they wanted to, to get it fixed. So, they already gave one encroachment agreement to the town for the, for the signs that Great put up. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's where the encroachment thing is. Okay, now, uh, the other thing that we have is we have, we came, I came last month and asked for the process, what does it take? We've got, you've got a vacant building down here at Town Hall. It's, as, as long as I've been here, which is over almost seven years, that's been vacant, I think it's been vacant.
Well, yeah.
Before that. I know that Michelle had tried to get some folks to start a new business there. Vacant buildings don't do anything to promote business in this town. Um, Michelle did get the front, the facade updated, but the building is in disrepair. There's major structural damage in the basement of the building, there's a girder that's rotten, there's floor joists that are, need to be replaced. The floor joist's not a big deal, the girder might be more of a big deal, and overall, probably, everything in the building needs to be updated or whatever. At any rate, uh, Kenny Wheeler here, who's been in business up at Poker Road for over twenty years, has written and offered a purchase for the building. His, his vision is to do something like a bicycle shop, and everybody knows the big new thing now is mountain bikes and bike trails and-
Yeah, they just recently opened a new bike trail, so they dedicated it, I think.
Yep, out, uh, one forty-three here, there's some new trails out around the mountains there, and I didn't even, I wasn't even aware of, of that until a couple weeks ago.
You'll have to get your bike.
Yeah. My life, my life, my life, my life, my life, not, not a pedal bike anymore. At any rate, so, he, his vision is to do, and he also repairs old pinball machines, he'd like to do something where he has some pinball machines there, possibly a bicycle shop, his son Kenny is involved in, in bicycling and working in bicycle shops, and he's- So at any rate, he has brought an offer for that property. Uh, we tried to find the process, we don't know what the process is, but the, the last month, you said the first thing we needed to do is to bring an offer to purchase.
I think that's what the term is.
So we brought that, here's Kenny, he can tell, he can show you the offer that he brought, and, um-
So, we'll just pass it around.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, just one.
Mr. Wheeler, have you been inside the building?
Yeah, 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 we went in and checked it out a little bit.
When was this? This is the first, this is the first time hearing about it?
Well, I, at the last meeting, uh, I was told that, uh, I had to have a town employee go in with us.
You were told to come to me about it?
Well, I, before I was told to come to you, I was told to come either to Chad or you, who Chad has a key. And I was told by the council that, um, either one would be fine, and that I just needed to have a town employee, so that in case anybody got hurt, that he wouldn't be, have any liability from it. So, I asked Chad to, to go and with the key and open the door. If I've offended you or hurt your feelings in any way, I apologize.
You just need to go through the proper channels, it's no problem, John, just go through the proper channels about it.
Well, okay, okay. So.
And we'll give that, uh, offer to the attorney, and we'll save up the next step, yes, and we'll proceed from there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Great news. Let's see you tomorrow.
That's it for Ripton, yeah.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah. The, uh, the folks that are gonna help with the, um, tour, we need to get together at ten forty-five in the public meeting.
Yeah, at that one.
Yeah, and I hope that everybody will be there and everybody will participate in this, uh, because we'll, like I said, we'll get back what we put into it.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, no problem. And you guys can, you can, you can leave if you want.
Okay.
I'm gonna stay for a little bit.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Yeah, like that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it.
I have to stand up, that'd be good. Then I'll, well, road rage, eating too much.
Take care, and then, too, thank you.
All right, next up on the agenda, Mayor Gross from the town of San Tito.
Yes, sir.
I want to address him.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Mrs. Gross.
Thank you. Um, okay, I, I wanted to let you know that I have been in touch with our attorney since I spoke to you on the phone. And unfortunately, he hasn't been able to put anything together. This is his information, if you, you know, offer, I gave him your information, and I will show you the email that's- I can show you the email that we've been emailing back and forth, uh, this is a copy of the email, I didn't make copies for all of you, I apologize for that. I'll let you read that, and then let you know where we are at.
Well, like I said, we'll have to get our attorney too involved, so-
Right.
Because it's a, what do you call it, so? Well, that and, I don't know, it's a, it's a-
Like an inter-town agreement?
Yeah, and it's, it's a, uh, town property, so we have to-
Yes, I understand, I can play, and I, I believe our attorney understands too.
So.
Okay, wonderful, but I wanted to know, because I was gonna have our town attorney write something up, but unfortunately, as you see by the email, he's just busy with trials right now. So, all three of them and their office are tied up, but it, you know, he knows about it, I wanted you to know he knew about it.
Okay.
Okay? So hopefully, your November meeting, I can have something to you by then. But I hope to even have it to you before then, but as soon, so soon as I will get it, I'll forward it to Mayor Adams, and then-
And I'm sure he'll send it to us.
Yeah, that'll be all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, next up, we got Chad, our maintenance supervisor, he wants to drift the board back to the fence around the June Oluska.
The June Oluska fence needs moved, um, it's gonna be too big of a job for us to do, um, the entire front-
Three different sides have got to be moved?
Yeah, the entire front section, and the two corners have to be moved back twenty feet, and then the upper right corner needs to be moved in, at an angle roughly twenty feet, so- So, I mean, it's way too big of a job for us to do and actually make it look decent.
Have you reached out to any of the...
Well, Ashful Fence, I contacted them. They're the only people that will actually come to the area. The other one said that it's too far of a drive to have a possibility of getting a job or not getting a job. And everybody has booked out so far. Ashful Fence has booked out 20 weeks upon making, you know, an appointment or whatever.
We'll need a quote from them and see how much it will cost to move those three sides of that fence.
Yeah, okay. It, it'll be pretty expensive. I know, just to...
Basically, they have to rebuild the fence, rebuild it, basically.
Pretty much, yeah.
There's a couple of other companies. I've tried reaching them in the past and they were so booked up, but I can try again. That was several months ago.
Yeah.
We need more than one.
Yeah, we need at least three, but...
The last time, you know, they were so booked up, they wouldn't even give us a quote.
I, I called two other companies back. And like I say, they both reached out and said that it's too far of a drive from them to even come out and give a quote. I called every fencing company, you know, within 75 miles and no one, no one would come out.
Okay, we'll let the mayor take a stab since he didn't get any more quotes. And then we'll proceed. Because we need to get the fence back on our property.
I, I, that would be it. I'm not sure. Is there a deadline on this, John?
As long as we get it done.
Yeah. I mean, the property, I'm really would like it done. Appreciate Chad. Oil and open, is that, blow the weeds? Yeah, anybody we can get to give us a quote on it. Yeah, anybody that'll give us a quote on it. The last time, it was last winter, we tried to get the fence repaired at the sewer plant and nobody would come out. They were so booked up. And then one company called, they said it's too far of a drive. Anybody who come and give us, you know, if they've got a fencing company. Any further old business? She's running on her new business. She's still working on submitting everything to the state on the, the wall on North Main Street. It's moving along. And I've ordered the sign for Morphe Street.
Okay.
We talked about it last meeting. I know it's a big one. That alleyway, it's quarter of an hole, I think. I don't know where the date is on that plaque, but it's Taylor Street. Okay.
That's what I thought before the mayor said. It was something.
Okay. And that's Taylor Street. Yeah, okay. Good, good find. We need to, how would the board feel about putting a sign? I mean, that needs to be identified then.
A lot of questions.
Yeah. How's the board feel about person the sign?
Well, if it ain't officially named, we'll have to name, I mean, if it ain't to the number one, we'll have to officially name it and then they'll put up the sign.
Okay. I mean, you want officially named yet or...
Well, if it's named Taylor Street, then it's Taylor Street.
Okay.
If it ain't already, I'll check with the number ones and I'll take care of that.
Okay. All right, here.
Is that, is that the, I'd like to ask you a question. On this street repair down here, is, can you give us any more specific information about that?
That's all I can say at this time.
So it's just, there's...
Yeah, we're just waiting, waiting on, P O T, yeah.
Okay, much the same way that we're waiting on the encroachment agreement.
Maybe it won't take us long.
No, we're making progress on it. Next up on agenda, Mr. Price would like to address us about the Graham County Saddle Club.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Well, thanks for letting me come. We are just getting up and started with this just in the last few weeks. We are an informal committee. Let me pass this around because I wanted all my little presentations.
Yeah.
And just want to flip through that.
Yeah.
It is, it shows the people in our committee and their involvement in all horse activities. Shows photos of them and their children. This is mainly a saddle club that is being started for families with a focus on children and youth. And so that families can get together. I know not everyone has a horse. But those that do can go practice at an arena, can learn horsemanship, socializing in a constructive manner. And keeps them from watching TV and being inactive and maybe depressed. I've been with horses for the past 40 years. I've had them. I was 32 before I ever had my own horse. I took riding lessons. I learned English riding and then Hunter jumper. And then I switched to Western and did Western Activities rodeo. I did endurance riding. I was a paralegal for 30 years, had a heart attack at 53, was told to rest. And when I did, I worked part-time for a lady that opened a carriage museum in Florida. And I worked for her and got an even more intense education in doing a 501(c)(3), which she was, working with the public, constructing her farm to accommodate all types of equestrian activities. She even worked in hippotherapy, which is therapy with horses and disabled veterans with post-traumatic stress, law enforcement also, abused women and children, autistic and drug rehab. We worked with that, with horses. Horses have an intuitive sense. For some reason, I can't put it into words, but people are helped with them. I think they're a forgiving animal. They just have a softness about them. Maybe it's their strength. I can't give you the exact word for it, but they are like a, in a way, a dog is a therapy animal, horses also. And, and so, I started coming to Graham County about 12 years ago. My husband and I, both a second marriage. His wife died. I was a divorcee. And we, he had property up here, Somer Almond and someone Frank's Creek. We sold our Frank's Creek and kept a small portion and built our own home up there. There are 35 horses on Frank's Creek and I know all of them, everyone. I love them so much. And so, we'd just stop along the road and talk to horses all the time. And in doing that, I met the horse keeper along the road and formed great friendships. Laura Adams, Kayla Adams, Jerry Phillips, Nikki Stewart, who come up there too to ride. And so, our little group, I'll tell you, those are the people in our little informal committee is Kayla Adams, Nikki Stewart, Laura Adams, Jerry Phillips. And we, we were asked by Chase Lancaster, our rodeo fellow, if he might join too. And we saw, we saw what he did here, even though none of us knew him well. And we were so respectful of what he accomplished.
Yeah, the rodeo went very well.
Yes, very.
He first approached me back in December or January.
That's what he said.
And I helped him get a place to set the rodeo up.
It was, you know, it was wonderful. I mean, you opened the door for him. I think he was, he was struggling. He was first time ever to do a rodeo. He had done bull riding in Alabama for years. And then he came here, I think his parents, his mother lived here. And he came here and he worked here. And he just saw the need. He saw the need like I see the need. That there needs to be something more than Deal's Gap on the map for this community. I love Deal's Gap. I love the mayor. My husband's a motorcyclist and I ride along with him. But I see the benefit of, of a family recreation center. And I spoke with Dirk Cody when I, when I saw what Chase Lancaster had accomplished. Because we thought we might be one of only five people at that rodeo and we were one of 1,500. Highly impressed I was. And so, I, I spoke with him and I said, "How did you obtain this property?" And he told me Dirk Cody's name and I said, "Well, I have this film of him." And so, I just stepped out. Everybody has been talking for 12 years that I've been coming up here. "Oh gosh, if we had an arena." "Oh goodness, we used to have one, maybe three decades ago." And we all, those that can afford to, they travel to Sweetwater, Tennessee, Blairsville, Georgia, Waynesville. Bryson City has just opened an new arena, brand new, and I'm nuts. I haven't seen it. I've heard it's beautiful. And we aren't even asking to, to do a covered arena. That, of course, is like the Taj Mahal of an arena. We're just looking to set up right now an outdoor arena, just have a place to store.
There used to be one.
Pardon me?
There used to be one, right beside the Stanley plant.
That's what they said. Jerry Phillips said, "Well, there used to be one."
I tended a rodeo.
Yeah. It was in the early houthis.
So, in April, I look back at, at the minutes of the county commission and I saw that in April, Gary Eisenhower had presented to the county a plea for an arena. And about that property that now belongs to Dirk Cody, but did not in April. And, you know, could we work something out with the county? They didn't get back to him, but it could have been because that property was in kind of a nimbo situation with the previous owner at this time and maybe other plans. I don't know. But it, it didn't...
Because it was right beside, right close to where they had the rodeo, where the riding could be.
It was adjacent and in the same ownership of property.
Yeah, it was the county owned, given.
Yeah, well, another plan on it at that time.
So that was tabled or just set aside. And so, so I called and I had a meeting with Dirk Cody and I told him everything I'm telling you. And I said, "What would it take? Would you have a problem if we worked out something with you? I think this community needs us." When, when I lived in Florida, my dad was with the government. We traveled all the time. We didn't, we weren't horse people. My family wasn't, but I was inside. And so, when I was first married and then my daughter was growing up, my husband at that time, we traveled a lot, military. And when we got to, we came from Louisville, Kentucky, down to Florida. At that time, my daughter was seven. And she's in a new community, doesn't know anyone. I started taking riding lessons, just to give that to myself by then. I just wanted, it was that time in my life, I, I thought I'd do the horse. And learned a lot. And my daughter just, she just wanted to go with me every time. And she gained so much. She was a lonely child. She gained so much just by the, the lesson horses gave her. So, eventually, a year later, we bought a horse. And there was a small, we were in a small community in Florida, but there was a very nice landowner that had set up, just at that time, part of his property for the rural kids to have an arena. And it grew and it grew and it grew. We became part of that. It was just like having a family. And those are lifelong friendships, everything, everyone we met there. My daughter gained confidence. She learned responsibility. She learned the love and care of a horse. She learned how to do recreational things that she'd been previously afraid to do. I saw the benefit and I see the benefit here. I see people here traveling to Blairsville. That's a long haul. Some people don't have horse trailers. With a saddle club, maybe we can share a spot in the horse trailer for somebody and get them somewhere. If the somewhere is only 10 minutes away or 20 minutes away. Mr. Cody told me after I spoke with him that he was 100% supportive of the idea. That he would be fine with us reviving that old arena. And Jerry Phillips told me there's still sand in that arena that they had put there. And that they'd have to be meticulously cleaned around so that can be maintained. If you had to add more sand to it, well, it can be...
I went and looked at it, Mr. Price. There, there is remnants that is still on there.
I was just wondering how much was still left. It's been a long time ago.
They said a lot has grown up.
Yeah, there's trees growing up.
There's a lot of work to be done, but I spoke with Danny Orr two days ago. He's on board with us and supportive too. And said that he would donate the equipment handed to do the plant. Oh, it's better to do. So it, and he's a...
It hasn't been used probably since the mid-'90s, I think. Probably the mid-'90s was the last time it was used.
Oh, that's a long time. Yeah, and you remembered that.
Oh, yeah, I remember it well. I used to go to a lot of events out there. There were several rodeos held out there.
So, I mean, and then Chase Lancaster, you know, we're, now we're thinking about, how are we going to do this? How are we going to financially do this? Mr. Cody said he, he would go with us to the commission meeting and speak to the commissioners, that he would be fine with working with them. And I know it's a tight budget. I do. I don't know how that will go. I'm praying about it. But he, if there's even a, some way that they could work with him, it would sure take just a, a, a small chunk off our shoulders as a saddle club to get it up and going. Of course, we would do trail rides to gain money and car washes and you name it, ask for sponsors, et cetera, et cetera. Tomorrow, I meet with an attorney to set us up as a 501(c)(3), not-for-profit organization. There, there is a lot yet to be done, but I see the benefit. It is so worth it. I'm so, I'm so passionate about it that I have to guard myself without overdoing it with you. I don't want to seem like all this theatrical thing, but it's like, I'm really excited. Because I think it can happen. And I think when they've heard about it are excited too. They see that it's a wholesome way for a family to spend time together. And even if there's children in the area and families in the area that don't have a horse, don't even know anything about it, they can come and watch and learn. They can take riding lessons, be part of a 4-H maybe. Future Farmers of America is starting at the high school next fall. Nikki Stewart is heading that up as an ag teacher. They will need an arena. If we already have one up and going and maybe set in place by next fall when Future Farmers of America gets started. How beneficial is that to the high school, to the county, to the FFA members, to all of us? I just see it growing because there's just a need and it's something, something to be excited about and proud of.
Yeah.
And when I go, I have, I have followed all my friends to Blairsville and Sweetwater, to these rodeos. And I see how they, they put these together and how many people come. Well, if that many people are coming to Blairsville and Waynesville and Bryson City and Sweetwater, they're spending money. They're buying gas. They're eating. They're looking at the land. They're looking at, some are looking for ideas of places to live, to be close to something like that. And I just, I mean, I just see it. It's just a wonderful thing. I've also, I also researched in Florida. I had friends that were with the Florida High School Rodeo. I had neighbors whose girls, they had five girls. And every one of them, they buy these good horses. Their dad was always teaching them barrel racing. Every one of his daughters got free. They got scholarships to colleges. They got horse trailers. They worked their little hearts out to do well. It's just like another sport where you can get a scholarship. I looked at North Carolina. All of their, North Carolina High School rodeo and junior high rodeo events are done from Asheville East. I would, when we get up and going, I would like to get them to recognize us for Asheville West. We, if we get an arena here, we could be in the loop for that. We could, because Bryson City just put up that brand new one. Waynesville has a nice one. If a Robbinsville house, I could see if we could partner with Asheville and see if they would recognize us someday for high school rodeo.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, so, I mean, those are, those are just some of the ideas. Yeah, so I mean, those are, those are just some of the ideas on hippotherapy, if we ever wanted to do that sometime down the line. It would take an accredited, certified physical therapist, speech therapist, occupational therapist, one of them, to become certified. A three-year, they have to be three years licensed. But if we know even one that would take an interest, we could become certified as our group. And we could be putting children in wheelchairs up on the back of a horse and give them the first feeling of movement.
That would be awesome.
We could work with autistic children who never speak and reach down and say the horse's name. We, I mean, I've seen all this because in Florida, I was part of, of that program. Abused women and children, alcoholics, you name it. I mean, I can't explain the game, but you've been around horses and you know it's, you can't, you can't explain it to someone. But it is a positive. It is a real positive and I can't boast about it enough.
Yeah, it's a good.
Like I said, I have to guard myself. But the names of the nearby arenas are the Union County Saddle Club in Blairsville, Georgia. And how they got that arena, that beautiful arena, and you've seen that, is the county commissioner, they only have one.
You have one more parish.
One county commissioner in Union County, Blairsville. He saw, I'm told, that this is the story. He saw that a piece of property was available possibly to be purchased for a golf course. He purchased it, gave it to the county for the saddle club. I'm not asking somebody to do that, not, not asking somebody to put money out like that. But I'm saying that's, he saw the benefit. And the recreation department manages that, that arena, or manages the whole setup. And the saddle club manages the upkeep. And then in Great Smoky Mountains Event Park in Bryson City, the county backs them. Sweetwater, Tennessee, it's an open arena. It is backed by the Lions Club. In Franklin, the Franklin FFA Arena is backed by Future Farmers of America. We don't know who will back us, but I believe we will get that back. I just do. And because there's just nothing, nothing bad about it, there's so many benefits. And even I saw that maybe once they get going, they could even have some of the old horsemen in the area do storytelling for children, maybe once a month down there at that arena. Tell them what it was like, give them the history of the area, where they used to ride. Their, their own idea. And I don't want to wear you out, but I could go on and on. I don't want to.
What we can do, we can actually, from the town, we can give a letter of support for your organization. And we will have to check into our finances, see if we can donate any funds. But that's, that's about what we can do today. And we can, we can draft a letter of support. And if you'll leave your mail-in information and stuff to Sherri, we'll get it done and have her sign it.
I'll type you up a letter.
It's so appreciated. I can't tell you enough.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
That does sound like a good idea. I hope we hit it off the ground.
Well, we're praying about it. We think we've, we've got some real support up here.
Mrs. Price?
Have a beautiful day. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Price, is it all right if they share your contact information with me? I'm with the great organization and we have some things coming up that might be of some help to you. If you just leave that contact within, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mrs. Price.
Thank you for coming in, Mrs. Price. Next up on the agenda is Chad wants to address the board about a backflow cross connection, ORC.
Actually, I forwarded that to you.
Yeah, it's on an email. Basically, the state says we have to have one until we can get our guys certified. We need somebody on our books, saying that they are the ORC.
And a tester.
And a tester for the backflow cross connection. If not, we're fine. So we need to get one in place and cannot remember the price on that. I checked my email. But it was, it was less than $400 a month. And that's for both.
Yeah.
And he'll test, test.
I think it's like every six months or once a year, something like that.
But that way, we're covered whenever we're getting inspected. So we have somebody on there. So I would.
I was only able to find one guy, Roger Patterson, I think was his name.
I know you said that to me. There it is. Yeah, for the, just being the ORC is $150 a month. And then testing was like $90. Find it, I'm sorry, I should have printed it out. And it was like $75 per bound. And how many vows are there?
There's less than five, I think.
So it'd be less than $400 for the, a month.
The fine.
Is it a month?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be less than $400 a month.
And that way, we got somebody on them.
But if we don't have a, an ORC or someone tested, it's like $400 some dollars a day. I mean, it's insane, but I mean.
And Mr. Patterson's agreed to do it immediately?
Well, I had reached out to him because I was wanting to make sure whatever the board decided.
But we needed, and then I think the fine is, basically it's $400 a month, but if we're fined, it's $400 a day.
Yeah.
So how's the board feel about?
I think we should get it put in place and contact him, see if he's still interested in it.
You want to put that in a motion?
Yeah, that'd be my motion, is contact Mr. Barnes?
No, I think it's Roger Patterson.
Patterson.
Chad, do you want me to make?
If you don't, if you don't mind, you can. Or if you do, I can take care of it.
I mean, you've already got the board with him.
Yeah.
Okay, you can go ahead and contact him.
And I'll forward that email, has all those on it to everybody.
So if he, if he's still on board with doing this, just go ahead and start doing it.
Start, yeah.
Okay.
And that's unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
And now if, if the, if the backflow machine, whatever, if it's malfunctioning, you know, there's going to be an expense on the new, you know, putting in a new one. So there will be some fees with that because they've not been tested since they've been installed. So I just want y'all to be aware, there will be some money that you can actually place it probably.
But it's something we gotta have, I mean, until we can get our guys in class to do it in-house.
If something happens down the line.
Would this be like a monthly thing with him? I mean, so it'd be okay. It would be exclusive, like a contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be something you'd be willing to take on, going to get certified.
Well, we had a class set up and then COVID hit.
And it's hard to get because there's a two-part class. One, you have to go and hands-on. And the other, you know, you can do, you can go take the test or whatever, which is no big deal. But it's hard to get everybody together when it's dealing with the estate and everything. And it, we've been trying for a while, it's just.
You could have somebody.
I've got, I've got enough people, me and Lamar and I think Bailey and I'm not sure exactly who else was willing to go. It takes five people to be able to have a class closer. So I mean, it'll take at least five people, but I'm sure.
And I don't think we're the only ones that need it. I'm sure the other towns or other people that have the same type system we do or whatever, need the same class. There are no more classes local.
I can reach out with other, you know.
You could reach out to like San Tito and Paul Danna and see if they've got anybody that where we have enough to do the class. Yeah, we talked to Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah. That way we can kind of share the call.
Kind of like we do with the Con Ed, we offer to everybody whenever we have a year.
Yeah. Yeah, we got a place to host.
Okay, so if you'll contact him and see if he's still interested and we'll go from there. And I sent that email to Sherri and Paul.
If, if I can get a school lined up, are you guys okay with me having a couple of my guys or whatever to be able to do this? That way, because I can't call and be like, maybe we might do.
I'd like to do it in sales.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the more the better.
Yeah. Get some of your guys up and ready to.
Or buy a shade of fire.
Well, I appreciate it, Chad. All right, next on the agenda, we've got a budget amendment. And this was for that skater system that was installed at the water plant.
Sherri. So basically, this is something that is a, the original budget amendment is approved in like June 1 of 2022. This is for the Long Creek Water Plant Skater System. And I kind of touched base with our new auditors and they stated that due to the fact that it was done in the new budget, that we need to amend the amendment we already done.
And that's the new one that's on top?
That's the new one that's on top, the number three.
Yeah, Sharon Edmondson confirmed that too.
Okay, that's very good.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve budget amendment number three.
Second.
Oh, the sponsorship.
Yeah, Debbie wants to address the.
I just remember reading that.
Was it the 150th magazine?
It's the 150th magazine that the Grand Star is putting out. They approached the Robbinsville Tourism. And I probably should have had a little bit more information. What it is, is they're trying to get sponsorship from different municipalities, different businesses. And if you do a sponsorship of $500, that covers being able to have something put on a page in the book. And what would be a good thought would be to have maybe a picture of the first mayor and the alderman during that time, and then a picture of us put in there. The Robbinsville Tourism took a picture of all five of us and then some events that we had done this year and put that on there. But we, I just thought maybe the town would like to take part in it too. We don't have to, but we.
Wouldn't that be more of an RTA thing?
Well, the RTA has already done their part. Would the town like to be a part of it is what I'm putting before us. If you don't want to, that's fine. Makes no difference to me. I just thought it'd be kind of neat to have the first town mayor and then you.
And then do we have a public relations line item? Because that money will have to come out of there, a PR line item. I think usually we just take it out of the mayor's budget, I think what we've been doing, but.
And then they also said that if we didn't want to do a sponsorship, if we wanted to just do not an ad, a page, it's $250. But if we do, we need to go ahead and get it done because I think the Grand Star is kind of ready to start putting it all together and getting it printed.
I don't see where we have like a PR, public relations line item. So we'd have to pull this from somewhere if we did do it. So. Is fishing everything, is it canceled for this year?
Not for physical, not for 2023.
I mean, till December.
Oh, yeah, but it's still in there.
Okay, I mean, it's going to be before next budget. Okay.
Yeah.
The only thing we can pull from is the mayor's expenses, but that's, that's all we have. From what I, what I can see, that's what we got.
I may need that in the future. Life time I took from my expenses and used to advertise for that concert. And then for the donations.
So it's up to the board, you know, up here, I think we should. I don't know about a full sponsorship, definitely an ad, but. But I say by next budget round, I say I think we need a line item that's for public relations so we can do stuff like that. So.
Okay.
So right now, we don't have any line item to pull from.
New business?
Can I, can I say something right quick? I was supposed to amend the budget or amend the agenda for that plus Michelle, but Michelle wasn't here yet, so I didn't know what to do with her. Is it too late for her to kind of speak?
You just have a motion to add.
Can I make a motion that we add Michelle Shiplet and Grape for a few minutes?
I'll see. Unanimous.
All right, Michelle, you've got the floor.
I'll wake up. Well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you guys today. I wanted to ask you about an opportunity that has come up before us. There is a, a group of grants that is coming available through NC Commerce and the ARCA funds that is called Rural Transformation Monies. It is monies that they are looking for that would help, especially in rural communities, to help with things that would tie to the work that's being done on the rock walls, kind of leverage with that. And also the work that John's talking about with the CPNI group that would help pull together, as I would term it, a roadmap plan for what the people in Grant County would like to see happen in Robbinsville. I know that you asked John when he was talking about that, how that would work. What they would do is it would bring people together and they would actually have community meetings. They would have surveys, they would have face-to-face, one-on-one conversations with people to have the input of the community. But basically, what we're asking these funds and this grant cycle actually has to be applied for by a government entity. So that means either the town, the county, or Southwest Commission as our council of governments would need to apply. I wanted to bring it to the town first because the work that we would like to focus on is on Main Street. So that's why I came to you guys first. It is very time sensitive. It's coming up the end of October that it has to be submitted. We have a gal that worked with the Corridor K Project who has actually volunteered to help us with pulling the writing of the grant together and working all of that.
So you're going to try to route a grant in less than a month?
Oh, Sean, this is my world. I did one Monday in like three hours that I didn't know I was going to have. Yes, but we've had a lot of help. And one of the reasons that this one in particular is so important is that they have had like two other run cycles of the same grant money. And there wasn't any group from the western region of the state that applied. And so Southwest Commission and the other government agencies in the state are really wanting to help people on this end of the state. So basically, it is, it is a really opportune time with the things that we already have going on to be able to leverage this fund and say, look, we're all playing nicely together in the sandbox. They like to see that, you know, with people getting along. So I just wanted to ask if the town would be interested in applying. If there wouldn't be any matching funds, there'd be no financial investment from the town that's required. It's just basically saying, we're going to apply for these and you guys won't even have to administer it.
Just because we apply doesn't really mean that we even get it.
No, I mean, it is competitive. It is competitive, but of course, this end of the state's a lot smaller group of people than the rest of the state.
True.
And so like Ms. Price that was here, would this be something that could help with? Would this be something that could help with maybe that, that part of it?
This, this particular thing is set out, it would be like, um, well, downtown Robbinsville, we, we're qualified as a low-income area through the census, but we're also an opportunity zone. So that means that we draw businesses and they get little checkmarks by their name for coming to work here. So that helps. But this would focus more on planning things, like, you know, like I said, the street skate, give us a roadmap of what we want to do five and 10 years, and so that we know that next year, when something else comes up and there's money available, or, or somebody wants to do something, how does this fit in this thing that we've already decided we're going to do, and we won't have to try to reinvent the wheel every six months? We'll have something set. That is kind of the direction this would go. But in answer to about Ms. Price, Gray does have, um, something coming up, but we're going to start working on what's called creating outdoor economies and outdoor recreation and health and wellness center is one of the things that's on our...
Well, even considering Billy Willer, you know, he's wanting to do the bicycle thing downtown. So I think, you know...
Right. And all of those kind of things are really good to be able to say to somebody when you're trying to give them a good reason about why they should give us money versus giving Andrews money or Bryson, is that we've got as many ducks in a row as we can get, or at least all in the same corral. You know, so when you can say that there's an opportunity of this business happening and that thing happening, and this is already happening, then that, that gives us little checkmarks by our name too. But because it is something that has to be applied for by a government entity, Gray can't do it, no one else can do it. It has to be either you guys or the county or Southwest Commission. But because the work that we're looking at would be in the Main Street area, to me, it makes the most sense that it would be the town that would apply.
Well, I would, I would like to be a part of it. I mean, I think, you know, that's a way that we can show our citizens that we're wanting to try to help our town, so...
You know, we're looking at hiring a new finance person, but is that going to be, until then, is that going to be any hardship on our current active finance? She is, she's doing like two jobs right now, so...
No, the thing that's really good about this one in particular, Taco, is the woman that was from Stan Tech is the name of it, is volunteering her time to work with me to do all that. So there would virtually be no impact on you guys as far as financially or human resources wise.
But you will keep us in the low, keep us on par.
Yeah, because, I mean, because your name's part of mine, you know, we're going to opt, so...
I'm going to make a motion that we can't, we go with it, we put our municipality in this grant submission and hope it works.
If it goes well, I mean, this particular one is for, for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, do I think that they're going to give us nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Probably not. But I mean, that's like, you know...
We can get just a, a bite of that.
If we can ask for that and they knock it down a hundred thousand, I'm still happy.
Something's better than nothing, I guess.
Right. So because it's so time-sensitive, we would need to do that, and all they would really need to do is to have you guys create an account with this grant interface on, online. That's the only thing that anybody from the town would really need to do. And then everything, we can run it through you, the application and everything else to submit, so that you know automatically what's happening.
I do have another question, it's not, it's off-topic, but it's about the, uh, downtown Wi-Fi project. Uh, the, our attorney had a question on who becomes ownership after, well, I think it was like two or three years, who owns that equipment?
Well, Gray owns it, and the, um, Skyway, which is now also Blossom West, will actually maintain it for five years. Our contract with them is for five years. Then after that, it's, it's up to Gray. And we, if it's still serviceable, we can service it, or the town or whoever can decide they want to replace it if the system doesn't work well anymore.
Okay, but you said it was your equipment, but if we want to upgrade it, then the town has to do it. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, our contract with Blossom West is only for five years, so after five years, it would have to come...
That was, that was her question, who owns it after the five years?
Right. And it, yeah, so it'd go to you guys, yeah.
Okay, that was, I think that was the question we tried to get answered.
Yeah, okay. Did we have a second on that motion? Debbie made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Unanimous.
Okay, all right, thank you for coming in, Michelle.
And I'll, I'll get back to you guys. And the Wi-Fi thing, so do you know whether or not they're going to be agreeable for them to do that? I think you guys are kind of the...
That, that was the, that was what we needed answered. And I'm glad you was here, so that...
I was out of town that day and I watched that guy when he came to talk to you all the way, man, he doesn't think, no, and he's sorry about it.
You want men to tend on the Wi-Fi performance?
Well, I was needing clarification, we'll still need to run it by the attorney on thing to make sure if that's suitable for her.
And if you just let me know, we should, they should be able to...
And we should be able to get...
I'm sure they want to publish that.
Definitely, at our next meeting, we should be able to... There you go. Yes, sure. Bye, thank you, Michelle.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Commence praying.
And, uh, John, we have a couple extra of those, uh, Remaginal Robinson books.
Oh, okay.
We have a few, and I'll pick them up before I go, because we'll leave a few here.
It'd be good when, when we do that tour, it'd be good to handle it, so let them be looking. I sent, I, I got a, um, electronic copy from this, uh...
We've got actually the hard copies, so...
Okay, but I mean, I did, I mailed that to them and they've researched it, they went online and researched it. So the hard copies would be good.
Yeah, we've got, I think we've got, how many is over there? A second for the bottle.
I'd say four or five of them.
I'll grab a few of them when I go up.
Okay, we appreciate that. All right. Do you have, are you, do you take a break before you go to close session? We're going to the close session.
Normally, no.
No, okay. We've got people waiting to talk.
Sean, if you would, give me a call after the meeting, because I'd like to have a, a talk with you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, we're going to make a motion going to the close session. Uh, yeah, the, make a motion that town proceeding trying to find a, AMI appraisal and a survey for some property.
Second that.
Unanimous.
EMA, sorry. I even wrote it down. No. Okay, so, uh, at this time, we're going to, I hope you have to do that.
Yeah, at this time, um, we have a motion to go into recess.
Till four o'clock, till four PM.
Say.
Unanimous.